Good afternoon, buenas tardes, and welcome to the June 26, 2025, meeting of the Fiscal Management Committee. I would like to begin by giving my colleagues a moment to introduce themselves.
Good evening, Pernille Sivana, student member of the board.
Good evening, Laura Stewart from District Four.
And Ms. Zimmerman will be joining us shortly. I'm Carla Silvestre, school board member at large. We will begin with the approval of the agenda with revision to move item 7.1 Fiscal Management Review up on the agenda to the first item following the informational summary. Can I get a motion to approve today's agenda as revised?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, raise your hands. Thank you. I would like to acknowledge that the informational summary for the committee's March 20, 2025, meeting is posted on Board Docs. Any questions on the summary? No questions? Okay. This summary can be forwarded to board staff. Okay, we will begin with the Fiscal Management Review item, previously 7.1. As this committee builds out its work plan for the 2025-26 school year, one of our goals will be to dive deeper into the academic return on investment of some critical programs and initiatives. Using the newly adopted MCPS Future Ready Strategic Plan as a guide, we will work with the Office of Shared Accountability, the Finance Office, and other appropriate departments to answer important questions on the effective use of our financial resources relative to the board's established goals and priorities, and need to support and sustain successful programs with a high degree of direct impact for students. As we move this, prepare... As we move to prepare for this work over the next year, I would like to ask Dr. Keisha Addison, Director of Office of Shared Accountability, and Ms. Yvonne Alfonso Windsor, Chief Financial Officer, to share any initial suggestions or resources you may have with us or board staff as we prepare for this work. I would also like to turn to my colleagues to see if you have any specific comments or questions to offer as we work to develop this framework. Ms. Stewart? Oh, Mr. Sivana.
Yes, I mean, I just want to say, when we come up on tough budget years, we always have to think about what are we doing for our students? How can we make sure that our students are getting the best education possible for as many students as possible? So when it comes to academic return on investment, I mean, I've been through multiple programs in my MCPS career. I've been to six different schools across the county. And there are different programs in different places that do different things for different students. And so having a really solid evaluation system and being able to come back and see it at some of these meetings to have a better sense of where we put our money will be really, really critical, in my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you. So you want to stay on another year?
If only.
Ms. Stewart?
And I will take his lead and continue that work. I think it's important that we be data-driven in our decisions. We get anecdotal stories, but sometimes we don't see the full picture. And so it's really important that we kind of color in the lines so we can see the full picture, so we know that we are aiming our dollars where they make the biggest impact for our students. So, thank you.
Yeah, and I wanted to say that first and foremost, I want to elevate the work Dr. Addison and her team does because it is critically important. Every year, the board approves the program evaluation agenda for the year. And I think it's important that the public get to hear more about the results that are coming out of that office to better understand how we as a system are evaluating the effectiveness, again, that return on investment for the educational programs of MCPS. So I'm looking forward to working with you both to select, as I like to call, some key levers, some programs that are going to make the biggest impact. There's, we could look at many things that you have evaluated over the years, but I think we want to focus on the things that are key to improve our academic achievement of our students in MCPS. So open it up to either one of you if you have any comments or to share.
So thank you for this opportunity. It is exciting, you know, moving in this direction. You know, we've had, nobody knows better than everyone here, the tough budget years that we've had, and the intense need that our students have. But as good stewards of taxpayers' money, it is upon us, right, to evaluate the programs and to implement, have clear goals and eventually metrics, you know, that were measured, the success of the program. And I know that's the work that Dr. Addison has been doing with his strategic plan and as she moves forward into the fall, you know, to establish those metrics. And for us, for in finance, it's return on investment for academics is different. So we don't measure success in our school system in terms of profits, like most companies do. So we have to look at, you know, the program itself, you know, the investments that we made in our personnel, and then the students, the populations, the needs that we're serving, you know, and then looking through that, how, you know, what is really our return on investment in here? Because here, it's all based on a student's success.
And if I could add, I think we are ripe for time right now in terms of the program evaluation agenda that you mentioned, Ms. Silvestre. We typically by now, we would have sent out our requests to offices regarding which programs they wanted to have evaluated. And intentionally so delayed that because of the adoption of the strategic plan because our formalized process is one where we connect the requests for those evaluations to what's identified in the strategic plan. And so that information in that request will go out to executive leaders early next week in terms of what are the programs of interest. We can definitely connect it intentionally to our budget. And what we did this past school year is ensure that there is a fiscal component to our program evaluation reports. I think the one thing that I am excited about for this upcoming year is being fully staffed in the Office of Shared Accountability. That's been our challenge going forward in terms of just the capacity, right? For the size of the district that we have, the number of programs that we have, we've been limited to a certain extent in terms of how much we can evaluate. And so when we think about academic return on investment, it's not like the business model. It really is program evaluation studies that provide us the opportunity to understand the effectiveness of programs, the extent to which that they are allowing us to meet the needs of students from an academic perspective. And so we really are, like, this is that sweet spot, I would say, that we are working towards doing that and preparing for this upcoming school year.
Thank you, and welcome, Ms. Zimmerman. We were just starting with, just introducing the concept that for the upcoming school year, we will be devoting part of our meeting's times to look at program evaluation and return on investment on education. And, you know, just highlighting the importance of both the Budget Office and the evaluation, and how important I think it's for the public to see that we do have a very robust evaluation, program evaluation system. And we just want to show our public that we are using our public dollars responsibly. So, thank you so much. Look forward to working with you to pick some programs that are key levers and having an impact on academic achievement for our students. So, looking forward to the work. Thank you. Okay, we will begin further discussion on this framework back to the committee's next meeting in September. Next on the agenda is item 3.1 Operational Workflow Study and Analysis Update. Ms. Alfonso Windsor, if you could just give us, yeah, start out with some context for our new members.
Sure. So this is the work that started, you know, early in this school year. And I want to make sure, we're going to look at the workflow study and analysis of our contracts. As you know, we have a struggle, you know, to make sure that, you know, contracts are managed timely, you know, and that we get them done in a timely manner so that our programs, you know, can be implemented. So we're hoping that this helps us, you know, support us through that process so that we can move through them quicker. I want to make sure that it is important for all of us to understand that this is not a public-facing database. This is only an internal database. Right now, what is happening is that, you know, an office might introduce a contract, and it has to go through several steps. It has to go through the procurement office. It has to go through our legal council. It has to go through several areas before the contract can be executed and move forward. So this is a tool that is going to help our internal audience know the contract that they started, where it is in the process, that they can respond to any comments and so on in a timely matter so that the contract can move through the process a lot quicker. So this is not public-facing. This is an internal database that has been established based on our workflow to move that contract, you know, through the different offices in a more effective and efficient manner. Okay? And I have the Director of Procurement, Angela McIntosh, here, and she will walk you through our process and what the workflow, you know, will look like.
Good evening. So, to recap, this is an overview of the contract lifecycle process. This was discussed a year ago. And these are the main areas of activities that occur as the contract moves through until it is finalized. So as a quick review, it begins with, you know, a submission of a number of forms, depending on what the responsible office is requesting. We ask that, you know, receive a completed scope of services or scope of work, the documentation that's required from the contractor in preparation for our contract agreement. And these pieces initiate in procurement, and then we share it as an upcoming task with our legal department so that they know what's moving forward. Once it's reviewed by legal, any other questions that arise are addressed by procurement and/or legal. And then simultaneously, we're obtaining a review from our data team because there may be data privacy issues or data that is being shared with MCPS or with the contractor. So we have to make sure all of those pieces are covered. And should, you know, the request so warrant, you know, the project manager gives it like another once-over, and if there are any further negotiations needed, any terms and conditions required to further negotiate, this will occur before moving on to finalize for signature. The next slide. And so this is sort of the timeline that it goes through, or that we went through, I'm sorry, for this tool to come into fruition. We briefed this committee, like I said, a year ago, and we began looking at how we would develop a tool to assist in the internal tracking of contract documentation. So we reviewed with the committee back in June of 2024. We started coming up with something to create with our technology department and with our legal department on what this could look like. So we settled on a Google tool that we're utilizing. And there was, there's been communication between different departments going through how this should work. We've provided some updates recently, or we indicated that we would provide updates with the Fiscal Management Committee as this was moving forward. So we have quote-unquote "launched" a pilot program. Before 2025, that was what our task was, and that has been completed. We've gathered some user feedback, made those adjustments that were necessary. So right now, the full system rollout plan is in progress. There are a few other tweaks that we were making, more so on the legal dashboard side, and making sure we were in alignment with the other departments on just, you know, where a document flow, making sure it's flowing, moving, everybody's getting the notifications as needed. And that's what was really important in this new tool, is that people were being notified when something was ready, instead of emails, you know, and transmitting documents back and forth through email. So our goal is to implement by the start of this school year, so August, September, and more. And then, just to give you an idea of what the workflow dashboard provides, these are highlights of the features for those who'll be using this tool. It's an intuitive dashboard. It features Quick Look Monitoring, better known as the Smart Status Monitoring, document tracking, quick action options, and document management. And that's it, in a nutshell.
I just want to add that we are targeting August so that we can move through, you know, through the process of the contracts a lot quicker this year.
So could you, could you just reiterate what's the problem we're trying to solve?
So the problem we're trying to solve is that sometimes contracts, you know, take months to go through the process. And part of that is the communication aspect of the contract. You know, an office might be sending the contract to procurement or the documents to procurement, and then they go to the next step, and no one knows, you know, that they have gone to the next steps. They don't know that there's different information or documents that are required to be able to complete the contract. And then, once, nobody knows what stage of the contract is unless there's a communication via email. So this tool will allow everyone as they log in to know their specific contract where it is. It allows offices that come later on into the process to know that these contracts are coming through and will need to have a look, you know, be in the lookout so that we can process them as quickly as possible. It will also contain all the information for the contracts, so everything is, the documents are all stored in one place.
Do these include grants? Are you considering grants, contracts?
Some, yes. MOUs, if we create an MOU for a grant. Or we have some professional services agreements as well, but yes.
And how many are we talking about in a year, for example?
I'd say 100 for sure.
Okay.
I think, can I just say something really quickly? But not, not the grants applications, though. This would not include grant applications, only contracts that might be paid with grants, but these are specifically to contracts.
Okay.
So are MOUs also, I mean, back to, because you said it's just the contract, but the part of the contract is the MOU, right?
We have different kinds of contracts. So, you know, so we have, you know, memorandum, you know, you know. Yeah, we have professional agreements, you know, we have contracts, you know, for services. Yeah, there are different kinds of contracts, absolutely.
Great, because I did hear that sometimes it would take up to a year and a half to go through the whole process. Meanwhile, we're losing time to get these services into schools, and then some, I think, just give up. And so we lose opportunities. And my question is, how did you look at the average time it took to get through the process before? And then what is the goal? And are you, I know you're not fully up and running, but were you, what? The work that you've already done has that, have you seen improvement?
I think that we have seen some improvement this year, you know, in terms of we understood, we identified the problem, you know, and we understood that we needed to resolve it. So I think offices have been in more communication, you know, to try to track the contracts. Our goal is really to have the contracts as soon as possible, you know. Sometimes we have a contract that is finalized, you know, after the work has started sometimes, you know, because we're moving forward, you know, in full disclosure. So we're avoiding, we're trying to fix that problem, you know, moving forward sometimes. The procurement office finds about a contract that should have been, you know, revised six months before, and it was never revised because this also aligns to contracts that we are currently implementing, right, that might need an extension. And, you know, we need to make sure that we're fulfilling those extensions as well. So it's all these issues that were identified, that, you know, that came, you know, in front of this committee that we are trying to solve, to make sure that we are in compliance, that, you know, our contracts are, you know, on a timely fashion. I would say that in order for us to be successful, it would be three to four months, the longest that a contract should take at all, you know, just to get through the entire process. That would be my goal.
I would love to see that improvement on paper. And just so that, again, I know the system probably costs money, right? And so this is, again, the return on investment issue, right? To say, okay, we spent this money, but this is what we got out of it, and this is, we were able to get this much better. And so I love, I would love to see any kind of analysis on that. Thank you.
Absolutely. And I just want to say that this has been an effort, again, between technology because they are developing this tool for us. It's not an outside tool. It's a tool that they are developing for us, but it's people's hours, right? You know, we're talking about the people investment and, you know, as well as our general counsel and the procurement department.
Thank you.
Ms. Zimmerman?
Thank you. And also, thank you to both my colleagues. You've asked some of the questions that I was curious about as well. I have one remaining question, and it is about, especially as it is painfully hot outside and we're seeing a lot of storms. So I'm curious, how does this process change for any of our emergency procurements?
I don't think it would because, again, that is, that is more of getting the expenditure approved so that they can move forward with purchasing the, you know, a lot of the times, you know, when, a lot of the times when we bring items to the board is a expenditure approvals, and sometimes we already have those contracts established with the contractors. We just need the authority to spend so that it doesn't really impact that process.
I think that's, yeah, in one way, that's really good to hear that, you know, we're still being as thorough. So, thank you. I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Ms. Sivana?
Yes, thank you. Again, thank you guys for your work on this. I know procurement can always be kind of like what's happening in there. I mean, I know that's, when I came into the board, that's kind of how I felt about it. I didn't really know what the process looked like. So having this in front of me really, really helps, you know, even clear some of the misconceptions I might have had till now. So I appreciate that. So you mentioned it was, it was a Google tool, right, and that we're creating it internally? Like, that didn't make sense to me. So if it's a Google tool and we're creating it internally, like, are we talking about like Google Sheets or like something else like that? Like, I mean, that's the first thing I think about. So just kind of want to ask that.
So we have, yes, that can, you know, walk you through this?
Good evening. How's everybody doing? My name's Ali Husani. I am the Legal Transaction Specialist. Work with OGC. And so to the, to the question regarding the Google, so we're using a system called Google App Sheet. It is an internal tool as if we're using the, the Google Suite that we have access to. So it's connected to like internal Gmail accounts, Outlook accounts internally. And so the App Sheet is just kind of a foundational tool. So we just build the software on that. It kind of automizes a lot of the features. So it's been really helpful.
Got it. Perfect. Thank you. I appreciate that. Yeah, I think that, that's basically my question. So then one more follow up question. So does that mean that anyone inside MCPS, right, can go back to procurement, can ask like, hey, where are we with this contract? And we can then go back and say, this is where we are, this is the estimated timeline to, to completion?
They can come to procurement, but also the end users, the user offices will have access to their own dashboard.
Got it.
And they'll be able to see where their contract is in the flow.
Okay, so, and then I'm going to follow up to my follow up. But when we, when we talk about, you know, everything in our system being, being publicly accessible, what, what a, what a user outside the system be able to go back and say, hey, like I, like I know, like we, like, like we have a contract pending with the system. Can I ask, like, you know, just, just asking the system, where, where are we in that process, right?
Oh, sure.
Like, would they be able to go back in and like just get a very clear response from, from MCPS now?
Yes.
All right, perfect.
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you.
So I think this is also very helpful because the superintendent can look for bottlenecks or, hey, what's happening here? This has been sitting here for too long or, or you want to?
Yeah, definitely. So a really cool feature that we heavily emphasized on was the superintendent's office having their own dashboard. So they'll be able to access all of the backend side to see where exactly the contracts are in the process. We added a feature that allows the superintendent's office to generate reports that will automatically pull all the data from X timeframe to Y timeframe and provide you with how long it's been sitting in whose office and what hand, where like, you know, the delays were. We've been able to implement like a tracker that kind of indicates, you know, how many days has this contract been sitting and with the data team or with Office of General Counsel or with procurement? And so that way, there's a lot more of both transparency and accountability when it comes down to, you know, us trying to figure out and analyze like where are the issues in the contracts themselves and where is that time taking?
Okay, great. Do you see this, after you rolled this out, do you see this maybe being applicable to other areas of the system?
Yeah, definitely. I'm super excited about this. But yeah, so we definitely see, so right now at the moment, we have like MOUs, professional service agreements, et cetera, grants that you mentioned is something that we've been kind of like brainstorming around. Being able to copy paste this model and introduce it into different, you know, fields of like processes was definitely a goal, and it could be done, so, or it can be done, so definitely.
Thank you.
Yes, I was really excited when you asked that question about grants because that is another purpose of this one tool, but it can be duplicated, you know, for that same process.
Great. So you said launching August?
Yes, August.
All right, fingers crossed. Yes, Mr. Savarna?
Yes, so I just had a question. I mean, we, you said that you had launched the pilot program before, like around January-ish. So what did the pilot program entail versus the full launch? Just so I have a clearer picture.
No, there just were a select group of end users that took it through the process and pointed out all of the issues that we needed to, you know, if there were any tweaking, there was any tweaking that was needed, that they provided that feedback.
Okay, got it.
So let's know what we needed to fix.
So like a limited number of offices, for example?
Yeah, absolutely.
Makes sense. Thank you.
Yeah. And Mr. Lockman, if we could just make a note, the, look at our agenda for the upcoming year and maybe have you come back to give us an update about how, how it went this first year and the plans for growth in other areas, that would be fantastic.
Will do.
I did want to give a shout out to former school board member Lynn Harris, who I know this was very important to her, and I think she'll be happy to hear that it's starting to implement. So shout out to Ms. Harris. All right, thank you. So now we are going to move on.
So that's your one last question?
Yes.
Yeah, I just wanted to, wanted to say, I won't be on the board, but I would love, I think the community at large would love to see the efforts of your work in a, on a screen when it, when it's fully implemented. So just would like to throw that out there.
Thank you. Next item is 4.1, fiscal year 2026 operating budget. Ms. Alfonso Windsor.
Can we get the PowerPoint up? Here we go. So I know we have talked about the operating budget before, so if this is just a recap or where we are, because I know we haven't come to the committee with a final year operating budget. I won't take a lot of time in this aspect, but I just want to remind everyone, you know, the public, that there were a lot of changes this year that were, you know, after the governor submitted his budget that the General Assembly implemented or did not implement. The thing that really benefited MCPS and other school systems was the collaborative planning time that the governor had recommended pausing and not funding for this year. And that would have in, in meant that MCPS was going to lose about $14.4 million of state funding. But luckily, the General Assembly did fund it. Again, that will be picked up in FY '29 as year two of the implementation. But there's going to be a pause. We're going to get the same funding for collaborative planning time in '27 and '28, but we don't have any commitment, commitment based on the funding to, to do collaborative planning the way as meant by the blueprint. We're also know, we also know that we had decreased funding from the state in terms of special education for our non-public students, you know, and that is something that, that has a potential up to $4 million impact in our budget next year, which we already know that it could be a difficult budget year. And then the shift of the teachers pension, the state's portion of the teachers pension from the state to the local governments, which is about $20 million. So those were the final updates from the General Assembly after the Board of Ed meeting met in January. Now, following the, you know, the Maryland General Assembly, we did decrease the request from the county council by $14.4 million since that we were receiving that funding from the state. And earlier this month, the board and the county council, the county council appropriated the funding at the end of May, and the board adopted the budget at the beginning of June. $9.5 million less than originally that the tentative improvement was, but that has already taken place. And then just as a quick recap, you know, the local funding decreased by $73 million based on the request from the boards, from the board's tentatively adopted budget. Estate aid increased by 14.4 like we recently mentioned. And then we are getting one-time funding of OPEB, which means that we are, you know, that helped us support our employee benefit plan that we've been talking about for a month, that the impact that the increases has had on, on, on that trust. But we know that we're going to have to make a significant investment in the FY '27 budget just to, you know, to be where we need to be. So there's something that we're going to have to consider as we move into the FY '27 planning process. And I know this was a decision that our stakeholders and our taxpayers, you know, had a lot of interest in, and I just want to make sure that everyone understands that this did not mean that we took funding out of our P F fund that is managed by the county. This was just decrease the contribution for next year. The fund has about $140 million, and it's really a risk management strategy to make sure that if anything were to happen and MCPS were no longer here, that our retirees will be able to still, we would still be able to fund the MCPS portion of their employee benefit plan. And then this is a review of the decisions that had to be made by the board and the superintendent in terms of the $9.5 million reduction. And the majority, or all of these reductions, with the exception of one, was not a complete elimination of, of those resources, it was just a decrease on what was proposed and tentatively approved by the board. So for example, the equity add-on partial reduction, we were originally had budgeted 5.4 million, so we decreased it by 3.2. Our schools are still going to, you know, we're going to start that pilot program for next year. Our special education teachers, we had budgeted an additional 188. We decreased it by 30, which leaves us 158 teachers, new teacher positions in FY '26. Maintenance, the pay as you go, we've all been hearing, you know, the needs in our, in our buildings, you know, to fix some of the items like HVAC and so on, and those emergency, you know, this is that emergency maintenance, you know, funding that we now have, you know, to support anything that comes up. And the three teams that are new for next year to, you know, to make repairs as quickly as possible or to go into a school and do what they need to do, those are still in place. That was not reduced. STEM curriculum for middle schools, that is a full reduction. That was brand new in the budget, but that is because the state is coming up with a new STEM guidance, and we just wanted to hold for one more year, you know, to know exactly which way, which path we need to take. Chromebook repair parts reduced by 500,000. Again, our budget is about $4 million, so that is a reduction of 500,000. Security assistance reduction by seven of the 52 that we originally were recommending adding. The academic program study as part of the boundary study, that is, we're doing that in-house. You have heard, you know, that at, at the latest board meeting, that work continues. We did have to reduce an additional almost million dollar from insurance, self-insurance and employee benefit plan. That is really not so much impactful because luckily, right before this happened, we got the bill for next year for self-insurance, and it, it was going to cost us $600,000 less than we had budgeted. So it was really, you know, just truing up the self-insurance and a reduction of 300,000 for our employee benefit plan. And then we restored 10 positions in central office that are really, they're central office positions, but they really support our students, you know, like the, the ETCs, the EML transitional counselors, the APIB coordinator, and a position in human resources to help with our operations. And then last but not least, we added $600,000 to the budget to really assess the needs of our special education areas and talent management to see how we can move forward, you know, in, with new initiatives and improvements in those areas. So overall, that was a $9.5 million reduction from the original budget. And then I turn it over to you for discussions to the board.
Could you put, go back to the last slide?
Yes.
And colleagues, please turn your light on if you have any questions. Could you explain a few of these for me again? The, the last one, the assessment of special education talent management, what does that position do or where does that, where does that money go?
So it's going to be money to, to look at our special education areas and determine, you know, what improvement or what changes we need to be, to be done. It's really going to conduct a study so that we can plan budgetarily wise for the future. As you know, we had several, we, some issues with special education this year. We had to add additional funding, and we know that our schools, that was, that was what kept coming up at the superintendent as he met with our stakeholders, the special education needs. So it's really to do a review of our services, you know, and how we can improvement. And the same thing with talent management, how we can, you know, improve our recruitment and how we, we look at that department as a whole to see if there's any changes that are needed.
So these will be external contracts?
Uh huh, external contracts.
Speaking of. Okay, so both special ed and then HR, talent acquisition. Thank you. Ms. Zimmerman?
Thank you. I just wanted to say that I really appreciate, especially for the viewing public, the extra explanation of OPEB. I think that there has been some confusion about that and additionally letting us know what implications we might see in future budgets based on that. So thank you for that.
Mr. Savarna?
Yes, thank you. So just to be clear, I mean, when, when we add, when the county adds fun, funding to our OPEB year every year, I mean, part of that is to combat inflation and then the rising cost of, of anything associated with, like, because it's, it's actually like risk management, right? So every year, you know, we might have the same amount to cover what we already had, but the, the amount of people covered will go down. So that's why we add funding? Or is there a different reasoning?
Well, the system, you know, the county took over the OPEB fund, you know, combined all the OPEB funds for, for the county and all the agencies, and I believe was in, back in 2012, you know, when this happened. And so there's $140 million right now, and that only funds about 60% of our retirees. So if MCPS were to close this year, we would only be able to fund for the remainder of their life cycle, 60% of their, you know, of their healthcare funds. So hopefully, MCPS will never have to close. So that's why we call it a risk management strategy specifically for a school system the size as ours. But it is part of the inflation, but also to make sure that we are fully funded. Eventually, the goal is that we are completely funded, just like in our investment fund that MCPS holds for, you know, the pension. Our goal is to be fully funded. So if anything were to happen, our retirees, you know, are covered, you know, for their life.
Got it. So it's, it's like planning for the future. I mean, like, well, at a certain point, we'll, we'll fully fund it and we'll just only have to add like dribbles versus like 50 million, right?
Then we will only have to add the inflation, like you mentioned, yes.
Got it.
If we ever get to that point, yes.
If we ever. And then again, I just wanted to reiterate that all of the things that we cut out of the budget were cuts from our additions, so not actually lost in service, just a loss in our additions. But again, thank you so much for the kind of, the breakdown of, of everything and for, for your work on the budget. I know this was a very, very difficult budget year. So getting to this point, we do appreciate your work.
Ms. Stewart?
So I just wanted to point out that the STEM curriculum, yes, that money is gone this year, but obviously, we will have to invest in that next year, right? Like, we can't punt this another year. Okay, so we have to be ready.
Correct. Once we get guidance from, from the state on how they're going to move forward with STEM curriculum, we will have to, this is a planning for the FY '27 budget, 100%, yes.
So that's, you know, it's a chunk of money, so we have to be ready as a board to prioritize that. And then the 50 million out of OPEB, like, how much do you think that we need to plan to put back in there this next year? Do you have that kind of plan?
So we have a three, you know, year plan to get our EPA, I'm sorry, our EVP, our employee benefit plan up, right? You know, solid, so that we don't have any deficits. So this year, we were planning to invest $40 million of the operating budget into, you know, the EVP fund. We're no longer doing that. This 50 million supports our retirees, a portion of our retirees, so that we could invest those $40 million in other things. But remember, this is one-time funding. So when we put in those $40 million, it was going to be based, part of that base budget, that is no longer part of our base budget. So we're going to have to continue making those investments. Originally, we were thinking 40 this year, 60 in FY '27, and potentially 50 to 60 in FY '28. So we will have to make a significant investment. Luckily, I do want to say, you know, we worked, as we said, really, you know, with, with our association partners, and they came through, and we have, you know, we have savings, you know, we have made changes to the plan that is going to reduce some of those, some of those costs. So that is probably going to put us in a much better place than we were anticipating. Additionally, we have worked with both Cigna, our healthcare provider, and our drug, CVS, our Caremark, the, the prescription drugs provider. And we have negotiated additional savings, you know, for the future. So they're going to give us, for next year, they're going to give us a six-month holiday fee on our premiums, and for the next two years, an additional three months and three month holiday fee on our premiums. We have also asked Caremark to do a market research to see where we fall, and they have, if, if we stay with them for the next two years, another 11% savings in the cost of prescription healthcare. And, and that is from year to year. So we don't have to make a commitment for two or three years, just from year to year. Same thing with Cigna. Additionally, Cigna has agreed to provide us, we just met her today, with a consultant or a contractor that they will pay for to help our employees, you know, move through this new health plan, you know, the care management. So she will be sitting here in our Department of Employee and Retiree Services Center to support our employees, to answer questions. She will, she's fully dedicated to us for, for the, for the rest of our contract with Cigna, to provide continued support to our employees. So we are working with them to reduce our costs. Those are some of the initiatives, to reduce our costs in addition to the, you know, Those are some of the initiatives to reduce our costs in addition to the, you know, the, the items that we reach agreement with, with our associations. And I, we hadn't shared that before because we were just able to, you know, finalize that. But we're continuing looking for ways to, you know, to save. You know, I'm continually exploring ways on what else can we do or differently to get us to a better place, a more financially stable place with our employee benefit plan.
So I kind of interpret that as hopefully, you know, we did take this chunk out, but we're also going to save some in the future. So then we won't be hurting quite as much. Like, when we take this over three years to try to get to the funded place where we're funded, that we might not have to pay back all that 50. I'm, I'm trying to understand because I'm, I'm thinking, you know, instead of saving 40 million, we did 50. And so then we'd have to put that over into three years. And, and then you mentioned all these savings. So I'm trying to understand, how does that work on the scale?
So we probably will have to, we're still going to have to make a significant commitment because again, the 50 million is just a one-time savings.
Right.
But instead of maybe having to invest 60 million next year and then another 60 million next year, we'll be a little bit better, you know, we'll be at 45. And, and then in the future years, our commitment will decrease substantially, maybe going to 15 and 10 million. It's just a matter of sustaining because, to be honest, except for FY '25, where the FY '25 included $40 million for employee benefit plan, the previous years, we really didn't make the investment that we needed to make in the employee benefit plan.
Well, thank you for that. That gave a lot of great context. And maybe in a future fiscal management meeting, we can have a slide so we can see all of that broken down. And I think it's a story of cooperation as well and that we're all on the same team and we're trying to get better and reduce some of our risks. So I appreciate that.
Yes, thank you.
I had a question about the, just helping me understand the special education reduction. So the, the original projected position number was based on what we expected to get in terms of students?
That is correct. It was based on the projection through January of FY '26. But as, we, we build that cushion, right? When we build this budget, because we know that we get additional students throughout the school year. So we, we, we built an allocation of 180 teachers. We, right now, have about 60 to 70 teachers on reserve prior to this 30, 30. We had about 60 to 70 teachers in reserve that we had not allocated to the schools because the enrollment wasn't coming in as we were seeing. And we really wanted to keep the paraeducator allocation that we did, you know, intact in the budget because those are the people that work one-on-one with the students. So by reducing the 30 teachers, we were, we didn't pull anything from the schools. We still have a reserve to be able to allocate more to them, you know, if they get an increase in enrollment. And at the same time, because we kept the paraeducator allocation, then we can, you know, allocate those to the schools if needs be, you know, for, you know, to additional resources to a class if at any point we don't have the teachers. We do know that once it gets to the middle of the year, it's a lot harder to add, add a teacher because you don't want to split classes, you don't want to pull, you know, teachers from one class for another. So the paraeducator allocation was, you know, a, a, a solution that will provide the support to our, to our students, yet, you know, not disrupt their, the education or, or their environment as much.
Okay, so if it comes to January and you don't have the students, I mean, we never, you will get more students and you'll have to allocate some of these positions to schools.
And we still have about 20 in reserve right now as we consider, yes.
And then in terms of vacancies, that's another variable, right? You have positions, but do you have people to fill those vacancies?
Correct. And in terms of the teachers, I know our talent acquisition department is working, you know, really hard. I know they're working on a, you know, a recruitment campaign and so on to make sure that we have the teachers. But as we know, the special education teachers that we hire, a lot of them are coming from other school systems because there is a national shortage of special, of teachers overall, but special education's teachers more than anything.
Okay. And do you have the breakdown of the central services position restoration, the 10?
So eight of them, sorry. Eight of them are the EML transitional counselors, therapeutic counselors. One is the coordinator of APIB. It's the restoration of that position that supports the schools. And one of them is a director that was eliminated in human resources to support their operations, specifically, bless you, with the, specifically with the human capital management. You know, we're moving into the other phases, the recruitment tool phases and so on.
Okay, thank you. All right. If there are no other further questions, thank you so much. I think it's always, it's always helpful to me to see after all said and done, all right, what, how much money did we get? What got cut, what got restored? And so that's, I appreciate that presentation. Ms. Stewart?
And what we might have to do next year.
Yes, it begins the, the day after the budget is approved, right? Yeah, process for next year. All right, transitioning from the recently approved fiscal year '26 operating budget to item 4.2, planning for fiscal FY '27 operating budget. Ms. Alfonso Windsor?
Yes, so we have started that process. You know, as you know, we have talked about some of the items that we'll need to consider for next year. This is an interesting time for us because we're, we just approved a budget. We're closing one school year, we're planning for the following school year and how we're going, and then we're going to have to start spending FY '26 as well. So it's that crossroad where we have three fiscal years really colliding, right? '25 closing out, '26 is starting the expenditures and '27 is starting that planning process. So the, the Department of Budget and Management is working on the piece, the technical pieces, right, of the budget. Because by the end of July, before blackout period begins for MCPS, you know, for the employees, we have the kickoff of the budget for central offices. And at that time, we release the budget for them to start working on submitting their request in September. One of the biggest pieces again that we're doing this year, which has been a change for us, if you remember, halfway through our budget process this year, we determined based on our needs that we really needed to go to a zero-based budgeting system. And, and we did that and we're going to continue that, you know, year after year. So right now really is we're working on how that process is going to flow for next year. We're making some tweaks so that the offices start making those requests and we can really look out how the money is going to be needed for FY '27. What are the ins and outs of that funding that the offices are going to be requesting? That is going to happen through the end of September. Additionally, in the next couple of weeks, we already started planning for the staffing standards work groups. Because our goal is to have a draft finalized for the superintendent and then the board eventually for the end of September so that we can plan ahead for next year. We don't know where, where that work is going to take us. We know that the staffing at elementary schools, you know, it's, it's not as robust as we would like. We know that middle and high schools are in a lot better shape in terms of staffings that elementary school. And so once we establish baselines and what the equity fundings, you know, might look, you know, the funding at a Title I, at a community school, you know, at all levels might look like, is that something that we're going to be able to budget in one year? Probably not. It's probably going to have to be a face-in approach. But we want to have the entire recommendation of what we want to move forward. And we're also going to be looking, it's not going to be just elementary, middle and high, but we have extended the scope to really look at special education, EML and maintenance and every, every single position that touches our school. So our new deputy chief of financial oversight, Alan Francois, you know, he just came right at the right moment. He is going to be leading some of this work, you know, with the work groups and so on to get us, you know, to get us moving so that we can be done, you know, by the end of September. You know, give or take. So that's, that's, that's part of our process. And then, as you know, we start, we, at, at the end of October, sorry, at the end of September, we get what our official enrollment is going to be for FY '27 in, in terms of how the state builds, you know, our state aid. So as we get that, we can start working through some scenarios of what a state aid might look like. Of course, there's other, you know, factors such as, you know, the relative wealth and, you know, the, the revenue that is coming in into the state. But we can start at least working on projecting some of that as for the superintendent's budget. So that's really the work that we're going to be doing over the next few months, you know, before that budget is released and then we start the process with the board again and so on.
Great, thank you. Never a dull moment and always critically important work happening all the time. I mean, the staffing guidelines are so important to teachers and families and students, of course. But yeah, looking forward to seeing that and coming to the fiscal management committee to give us some updates on, on how that work is going.
And if I may say, one of our, our goals really is to make our staffing standards very transparent, that anyone can just look at, you know, our staffing standards or determine, you know, what that might look like at their school.
Okay, any questions? If not, we can, go ahead, Ms. Zimmerman.
I was just going to say that I look forward to that. I ask about that a lot, at a lot of different meetings, so that's exciting to me.
Okay, all right, thank you. And moving on to item 4.3, Montgomery County Public Schools Categorical and Object Transfer Process. Ms. Alfonso Windsor, what do we need to know?
And I do hope that next year I have a more variety of people up here than just me. You're going to get tired of my voice, but for, for today, you're stuck with me. So this is a very technical, but I think it was important for everyone to understand, you know, the, the oversight of the board in terms of, you know, how we spend our money and how we move money. And, and, you know, the requirements that are upon us, you know, for Maryland law, you know, county law and so on, that we have to, you know, guide ourselves by. So I just want to, just a brief overview, our state categories, they're, you know, they're set by state law and they required all our, you know, our school system to budget based on the state categories and to the, to record also transactions on the object of expenditures as well. So those are the two areas that we have to report to the state and that we have to report to the council as well. And they have to appropriate our budget based on the categories. So here you have a listing of our state categories and I'm not going to go through all of them. But obviously, our biggest category is always instructional salaries. You know, two-thirds of our budget is sitting in instructional salaries. When you look at category five, other instructional costs, those are our contractual services. A lot of them sit there, you know, when we have a contract with a vendor that provides services to our schools like college tracks and so on, those are our instructional costs. Every special education support has to be in category six, a special education. And that is extremely important because a lot of our federal funding is based on the maintenance of effort for special education. So that's how we track how much we're spending in special education. Student personnel service, this is our PPWs, this is our social workers. This is, you know, that's what's sitting there. And then our second largest category is fixed charges, which is our employee benefit plan and any benefit, you know, for our, for our employees. So that is how our budget is broken out. Then within the categories, you have the object of the expenditures. So for example, you have a category one, which is administration, where you have the salaries for the employees. You have any materials that are spent at the administrative level are sitting, which is object three, which is reported as part of category one. But then you have a few categories, categories three, category four, category five and category 12, that only some objects of expenditures apply to them. So if you look at category three, obviously you can only pay salaries. So you're only going to have salaries and, and wages sitting in category three. When you're looking at category four, you're only going to have supplies and materials. Category five, you're only going to have other costs, fees, benefits, no, sorry, contractual services and furniture and equipment in that category. And when you're looking at category 12, you're only going to see other costs, fees, benefits and so on sitting. So it's only one object of expenditure that applies to that. Other than that, objects of expenditures, you know, impact every other category, all, all objects. So that is very technical, but that is, that is just to give you an example of how the MSDE and our county sort of looks at our budget, you know. And because I know the board looks more as how we're spending the money and so on, other than our monthly reports. So category transfers, category transfers have to be approved by the board and have to be approved by the county council. So there's two ways that we do category transfers and, and two processes. One is for grants and one is for local funds. When it comes to grants, we have to align the grant with the approved grant award. So, and we have to spend the grant within a certain amount of time, right? So we, it's not like we can wait three months to change. If, if, if we determine that we have $600,000 left in a grant and those $600,000 were tagged for contractual services, but the contractual services are going to cost us less, we can submit an amendment to then say, we're going to spend $500,000 in contractual services and we need $100,000 for materials. And we cannot wait because we want to spend that grant, right? We want to utilize all resources. So we submit an amendment of the grant to our grantor, whether it's MSDE or another grantor. When they approve that expenditure, then we bring it to the board quarterly to approve those transfers. And that's where you're seeing the quarterly grant category transfers reports. Once you approve it, that is transmitted to the county council and approved. And it's, they don't take any action of it, it's automatically approved after 30 days. That is the agreement that we have with the county council in terms of the grants. When it comes to local, we can't make categorical transfers during the school year. We can't. So what we have to do if we have an emergency, we have to overspend a category if that's where the correct expenditure is happening. You know, we have to overspend the category. At the end of the year, we do the reconciliation within the categories and it's part of the auditing piece that happens, you know, between July and September as we work through our auditors. And then we bring to the board in August, when we close our books, the categories transfers that are needed. And those includes as well, all the category transfer for the grants that you already approved. That's built into the category transfers. Then we send that to the county council and then they act on the category transfers, usually in September, and they approve them. And we have to finalize our ACFOR, our annual comprehensive financial plan, you know, based on those category transfers that are approved by the council in, you know, in collaboration with our auditors that are reviewing all our documents to make sure that we're following the law. So that are the two different processes that are taking place. You know, there's the grants and then there's the local that is, that is happening with our categories. Then last but not least, the object transfers. Those are a little bit different, you know. Usually, we don't, we don't do object transfers outside of categories. They have to stay within the categories. But if over 100,000, we always bring it quarterly to the board, you know, to approve that, that transfer. If it's under 100,000, we do a report that is transmitted monthly to the county executive and the county council. And, and I think we had a conversation where we're not sure if the board is really receiving that transmittal to the county, to the county council and the county executive, but we'll make sure to include the board, you know, moving forward. And it's not, they don't approve it, it's just an information item for them in terms of the less than 100,000 object transfer. So that is the first, I know this was a technical presentation.
Yeah, I think when we were planning for this meeting, I had questions about, I'm always astounded by like emergencies. Where is that money coming from? Because the budget is the budget, things are allocated. And so I was curious about what flexibility or lack thereof you have of moving money around, around in, in categories. Could you talk about that?
So, yes, so we, we have to spend appropriately based on the category. So let's say we have an emergency in maintenance, which is usually category 10 or category 11. And there's no funding for that in that particular account that is reserved for that specific emergency. So we have to overspend that account, right? So we cannot move money, we overspend.
Okay.
And then we, and you saw it this year, right, where our budget was so tight, we have to find other areas of saving, specifically in operation, in operating budget so that we can offset that overspending. So we have to have surplus in other areas to offset that deficit that we're creating because we had that emergency. And as, so that happens throughout the year and we reconcile at the end. So we reconcile at the end of the year in that movement of categories after the board has reviewed it. has reviewed it and approved it, and then the county council reappropriates our budget by those, with those changes.
Okay. And the $100,000 threshold?
Is for the objects of expenditure. So it's, let's say that you have category nine transportation, let's just use that one as an example. Let's say that they had a lot of substitutes because they had a lot of bus operators, you know, that were sick, just as an example. And so we have to overspend or we need more money in those salaries, but we know that we might have $100,000 savings in fuel, and it's two different objects. So in that case, we can move the money. So we transfer the money from category nine, fuel, let's say for an example, to salaries and wages, and then we report that as a transfer, as an object transfer within category nine.
Okay. And each, each of the 12 areas of the budget, they have multiple things in there, it's like it's only transportation, it's only, there's a lot of different things that fall under that.
Correct. So in different offices, yes. So different offices will have different categories of expenditures and different objects of expenditure. Is that, is that what your question, or was it within the category?
No, sometimes I think in years past, there's been like, like, how can you have excess money in materials when teachers don't have enough materials in the classroom? How is it possible that there's money sitting there and it's not going? But it's not only materials, there's other things that maybe we can't spend.
Correct. But, and also, we are working on that because sometimes the schools don't spend all their money that are allocated for materials. So we are working on that. And I think when we hear those concerns from the teachers is what you just mentioned, sometimes the budget is not allocated, you know, in the correct category because we're doing the planning a year in advance, right? You know, and we're looking at things a year in advance. So let's take, for example, the equity add-on that we're doing this year. We understand that some schools, not all of them, have more supplies and materials funding that they spend, but we have been talking about this, they might need money for field trips. They might need money to pay for buses or for the fees for the students to get into the field trips. So what we're doing with that equity allocation is, we're not putting all of it in materials. We have conducted work groups with the schools, you know, through our advisory groups to determine the three highest levels of needs, and we're gonna allocate that money to the schools based on those levels of needs and where they need that money. It's our first year, so it's not gonna be perfect, you know, as we see the spending and as we, you know, do an analysis at the end of the year, then we will resuscitate it next year to see, you know, what is the appropriate, you know, spending level for field trips or for if they wanna bring in a professional learning opportunity for their teachers, you know, to support students and so on. So sometimes, you know, the budget is rigid in some areas and we're trying to find ways that we can support the schools with the needs that they have by budgeting, you know, in different, in different ways.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Stewart?
You mentioned advisory groups. Which advisory groups? I don't know if I've ever actually seen a list, that's what I'm asking.
Yes, no, no, absolutely. So we have several, so for finance, we have several advisory groups. Well, we have the Budget Advisory Committee that involves all kinds of stakeholders. Now, as the chief financial officer, I also have a MACAP advisory group, which means members, administrators sign up to be part of the finance advisory group. And we meet four to five times a year and includes administrators from central services, from schools at all different levels and all areas. And there's several of them, of those advisory groups. And then those advisory groups bring, you know, our questions to their peers, you know, to get, you know, feedback from them so that they can bring back to our group. We also put out a survey this year, since it was our first, the first year that we're rolling out that equity add-on, we did a survey to all our principals or all our schools to see how they felt that that funding was more, it was needed, so that we could collect that information. We brought it then to the advisory group and we made determinations on the best ways to allocate that funding.
Okay. Ms. Sivana?
Yes, thank you. I mean, I'm just gonna go back to this equity add-on for a second and I can just say, this is something that, you know, when I was back in my sophomore year of high school, this is something that like was, was kind of like floating around out there in some of the meetings I'd been to, when, as it relates to like the Board of Education, student members of the board. And so, again, not to kind of go back to old budget points, this is something that it's nice to finally be able to see in our actual budget. And then just, you know, as we, as we go into future years, really, I think a very strong substantive evaluation, like we mentioned, about how this funding is going for schools, will go a long way into proving its efficacy in the long run and showing that, you know, this equity model does really support schools and clears up some of the systemic inequalities that we deal with within our system.
Ms. Zimmerman?
Thank you. I just wanted to add to Mr. Sivana's point that I am also looking forward to seeing the analysis, and I appreciated the way you explained the breakdowns and the categories and ways that the money will be spent as well. I think that'll be really helpful for, as we look for return on investment, to see where money is going. So, thank you.
Okay. Well, thank you for that. And now we're moving on to facilities, so you get a little break. Our next updates are items 5.1, Facility Condition Index, and 5.2, Heating, Ventilation and Air Conditioning Program. Welcome.
We're here to talk about a couple of the items that are on the agenda. We'll start out with an update to the Facility Condition Index work that has happened so far. So just a quick reminder, we came to before the committee and also talked about the Facility Condition Index in front of the board, and we're essentially released the scope to the contractor to complete the facility condition assessment. The goal is to calculate the current replacement value in Facilities Needs Index. So as for the first part of the scope of the work, we originally started out with 50 of our facilities. We added two more to that. One of those was based on a comment we received from the board to include New Hampshire Estates. So that is being assessed as well in the first round. And then we also included the former Rock Terrace Building in the first group. So just a quick reminder, the assessment will include all the buildings that were built before 2023, where, you know, we didn't see a need to go back and, you know, obviously assess brand new buildings. And then that would also include our holding schools and any other Board of Education-owned properties, like the CESC, any former operating schools where we have central services staff or lease tenants, just to get a full picture of our facilities. So the goal was to, you know, assess the, you know, 52 of these buildings by the end of the summer, and then the remaining facilities will be evaluated in the second phase of the assessment, which will be completed by the end of next summer. So things that was considered were ranked, so we started out with this list and I'll go back over the list, you know, in the next few slides, were ranked, we started out with the Maryland Conditions Index, MDCI, that IAC uses, because those were the most current numbers that we had, that allowed us to identify, you know, the worst buildings based on those numbers. And then we also picked schools that had approved feasibility studies, planning dollars and/or placeholder construction dollars in our CIP program, and then schools that hasn't received any major capital projects in the past 35 years, and then obviously, schools with critical infrastructure and holistic management, maintenance challenges, schools that have other issues such as ADA, site challenges, and then schools with capacity or other programmatic challenges. So just a quick reminder of the first 50 schools, these are the secondary schools, the, the schools that are highlighted in blue that do have approved feasibility or planning dollar in our CIP. And those schools, the Eastern Middle School is currently undergoing a feasibility study out of those blue ones, and we will obviously plan to have feasibility studies for the other schools that are highlighted in blue, based on our CIP conversations. And for the elementary schools that were included in the first 50, the schools that have currently feasibility studies going on are Burning Tree, Damascus Elementary, Piney Branch, Twin Brook, and Whitestone currently have feasibility studies. When we do go over the update for the capital projects, we'll talk a little bit more about, you know, where these feasibility studies stand. But these are the schools that were included in the first 50 schools that were under the study. So status update, basically, all the actual school visits by the consultant has been completed. They have gathered all the data and then have, you know, they have shared the initial raw data with us for us to start our review. We plan to complete the analysis and sitting down with the vendor, going through this data over the next few months. We will then update, because our, you know, website has the previous data from the previous, you know, study that was done in 2019 and 2022, we plan to have those updated for the, you know, these 52 facilities in the fall. And then the, you know, as I already mentioned, that the remaining schools and facilities would be assessed by the end of the summer of 2026. So the results of this study for the first 52 schools will help us inform the next CIP that we plan to bring in front of the board in November. So that's a quick update on the FCI, and I would then turn it back to you for questions.
Ms. Stewart? So for the FCI, we went through this back in 2018, 2019, and you've seen the data and the way it's presented, color-coded, et cetera. What can, how are we going to be, can you give us a preview of how we're going to be able to digest the data? And part two of that is, was, is there a precedent that you used to evaluate these schools? Like, did, is there a standard, like an industry standard that you used to come up with how, what you actually evaluated and then how that is shown to the public?
So that's the conversation we're having with the vendor. So this is the same vendor that worked with the State of Maryland when State of Maryland rolled out their MDCI program. So, I mean, they're using industry, so industry standard to essentially look at all the components of the building, like they will look at all the infrastructure components, the plumbing, even they will go out to the site and look at, you know, conditions of any ADA challenges on the site, or any, you know, issues with the facade, the windows, they will look at the roofing, they will look at all the, you know, HVAC components. They also are looking at, you know, our data based on the work order history and all of those. So the, I mean, they're following the industry standard to look at all the data points. So the reports we're receiving, the raw data, is absolutely a huge amount of data. So that's what we're working with the vendor on, to make sure that we're able to present it in a way that, you know, is more digestible instead of, you know, sharing a report for each school that is 150 pages and a lot of, you know, the, you know, the folks will not be able to, you know, go through the data to understand, you know, what's in, you know, presented in there. So we're working with the vendor to come up with that, you know, that, not a dashboard, but more of a concise report, but it just goes through and points out the critical factors based on the, you know, the, the building components, the, specifically like the building systems, which would include your, you know, indoor comfort, HVAC, lighting, ADA, roofing, and facade. So that's the work that we're doing with the vendor currently.
And I'm curious, how do we know that this data reflects the real world experience in the school? Because I did notice the last time when I looked through, some of it didn't really track from what I was hearing or experiencing. And so is there any cross-check, like, do you talk to the principal or to teachers to say, you know, is this what you're experiencing? Does this track? Because maybe there's an area of the school that has an issue and it's not being reflected.
So the, the work of the vendor is strictly based on just the industry standard practices of what they're looking at for the building systems and looking at replacement value. We're, again, as I said, we are also looking at the work order that, that exists in those schools. That also helps us inform whether, what we are seeing as far as conditions, because sometimes a condition of an equipment, if it says it's only seven or eight years old, may not necessarily reflect how it's operating. So we're going to be cross-checking between, you know, the information that we're seeing on paper, which is a calculation versus actually what's being, you know, what's being seen, what, by the work orders we're receiving from either the teachers or building service folks, as well as obviously our maintenance folks who are very familiar with the building because they're the ones who are, you know, working on those work orders, they will be looking at that data as well.
My last question, do you expect that there will be a numerical value assigned to, like, a score?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. And so this is super important as we build out the next CIP, right? We need to, can you talk more about how they connect?
Yes, so we wanted to make sure that we're using the data as we are, because this is, we're in the, you know, a new cycle, because, you know, the previous CIP we just went through was a revision year. Obviously, this is a year for, you know, for us to present a new six-year CIP. We wanted to make sure as we're building that CIP, that we're, you know, prioritizing the schools based on actual data, and this is gonna be very helpful and help us inform that. And part of the study includes that replacement value, which also allows us to see as we are planning and identifying which schools to renovate, what is required for that renovation, which would allow us to build that budget out more accurately.
Okay. Thank you. And even if there is a numerical, there's always never enough money and more need, so there's always decisions that have to be made.
Correct.
And priorities, even if they are ranked. Ms. Stewart, did you have another comment?
I just wanna say that we could make this as a deck of cards, 52 schools. But anyway, that's my own imagination running wild. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. And actually, could you introduce yourself? We didn't get a chance to do that.
Good evening, hi everyone. Andrea Swiatoka, I'm the new deputy chief of facility management.
Welcome, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so let's continue with our next item, 5.3, Capital Projects Update. Ms. Mamoun?
Yeah, sorry, there wasn't one more item about the HVACs.
Oh, okay.
Systemic, so I wanted to go over that very quickly. So wanted to share a little bit of how the HVAC projects are determined, as well as, you know, what's involved in, you know, the planning process and, you know, the timeframe it takes for us to, like, from planning to actually, you know, changing out an HVAC in a building. So the HVAC systems are, you know, the schools we select for these projects are based on age of the HVAC system, as well as work order history and other metrics. And then once the schools have been selected, what we do is if, like, for example, we, we just talked about our next CIP cycle, if we determine that there are other HVAC projects we want to put in, in the CIP, we will apply, you know, we will present that to the board and based on that, we will be applying for state funding as well, because if, in the age of a HVAC system is more than, you know, 15 years, we can apply for local, state funding. So we'll go through that process. Once the state and local fundings have been approved for that particular project, which typically happens in May, we can then start, you know, issuing design contracts to start the design process. That typically usually takes about a year to, you know, design a replacement for an HVAC system. And then once that's completed, you know, and then we go through the bidding process and then we, you know, go through the permitting as well as ordering long lead items, because sometimes these equipments can take, you know, upwards of, you know, 35 to 40 weeks or more in order for us to get it. So typically, by the time a fund- So, typically, by the time a funding is approved for a project and then we go into construction, there is almost a two-year period that we have to wait before that project can start. And as far as doing the construction of these replacement HVACs, typically, an elementary school could be done over a summer break. But if it's a middle school or a high school, middle schools typically at, at least would take two years. High schools can take, you know, four years or, you know, in case of, you know, certain high schools, it could be even more than that. So, just a quick, you know, visuals of the timeline, you know, so somewhere around 2025, we will be identifying schools based on a variety of factors we just talked about. October and November, we will be applying for state funding through the state CIP funding process. And then, we will, you know, also apply for or request local funding through the local process. And then, May of 2026, we will be, you know, we will become certain whether the state's actually approving our CIP award. And then, the council will, action on the local CIP will ensure whether we have funding for those projects. And then, you know, during school year 2026 and 27, we will be designing that project and permitting. And then, 27, 28, you know, we'll finalize the permits, award the bid, and procure the equipment. So, anything we're planning now, essentially in summer of 2028, we're going to be starting that construction. So, just wanted to share that timeline so the committee understands that, you know, between planning and actually starting construction, there is a long, a long time that takes place. And then, just a quick update on what we're doing currently. Under construction is Gatorsburg Middle School, that's in its phase two. Sligo Middle School will undergo phase one this summer. White Oak Middle School, phase one this summer. Harmony School, Harmony Hills and Monocacy are just one summer project that will take place this summer. And then, currently in design is Springbrook High School, Whitman High School, Drew, and then Matsonaga, Longview. And then, also, even though it's, we don't have a CIP funding allocated for New Hampshire Estates for an HVAC replacement, like, we informed the board earlier that we are, we have issued a design contract because we know that there are known issues with the HVAC system there because they're having moisture problems. So, we do have that design underway. And once we have that design completed this summer, that will allow us to, you know, consider that and include that money request in our CIP. And that's all the update we had for HVAC. Are there any questions?
Stewart.
So, I'm just going to use one example, Monocacy Elementary School, which is now being done, which is great. But I believe that was delayed three different years. And so, I don't have a sense of how often that happened at all because we've never received a report of this, at least it's not tracked, right? Like, if you do this every year and then the next year, like, oh yeah, we didn't have those funds, you know, even though it was planned for the next year because then the summer would come and then the principal would be ready. Like, oh, we're, tell, tell the PTA, oh, we should get the funds and then they don't get the funds. And maybe some of that's communication. But I think it's really important that the public knows what to expect and also knows that when we can't fund these projects, there's real-world consequences and it includes delays. And then, the condition of the school can actually get worse through time. So, is there any plan to track this issue? Thank you.
So, your particular question about Monocacy, I will have to go back and find out what, what happened with those projects. So, again, I think what we've been talking about this evening is kind of all ties together. I believe that with having that conditions assessment completed allows us to really understand the replacement values. In the past, what we have seen on projects, and I can't particularly speak to Monocacy, so I don't know what the cause of that delay was. However, we do have, you know, a funding allocation, say, of $40 million for HVAC projects. And we are planning to do a certain number of projects. But as you remember, right after the pandemic, the market, you know, started really swinging upwards as far as cost of work that gone up. And it could have, you know, sometimes, you know, properly not, if the projects were not properly budgeted, then it had to be moved out for a future year because, you know, that HVAC funds that was allocated was not enough to do the projects that were originally planned. So, those could be some of the reasons. And again, I can't speak specifically to Monocacy. But I think as we're doing these conditions assessments, what it allows us to do is to, you know, identify the, the systems properly and then putting in the current replacement value. And then, as we are planning, if we know that the project would start, say, in 2028, having that proper value of that current replacement allows us to put the inflation factor that we can on it to, you know, budget these projects more accurately. So, I think, you know, going forward, we can plan better. But obviously, the piece of communication, I think, is also important that when we do understand that we're, you know, facing a challenge, whether it is due to a delay in equipment, which has, you know, recently happened on some, certain projects, that, you know, we were, you know, ready to replace some HVAC equipments, but then we had an issue because we were not able to get the equipment from the manufacturer in time. I, I think, you know, we can definitely, you know, do a better job in communicating that with the, you know, the, the principal as well as the school community. So, we'll, you know, definitely taking your, noting your, your point about that.
Thank you. And just to have some kind of way, a transparent way to track what happened. So, then, as board members, we can even see those patterns and we can help communicate with the community as well because we, you know, go out to the community and we hear about these things and we don't have the tracking. So, for me, it would be helpful just to be able to go back and look, okay, so this is what happened in this year and this is why we are where we're at. Thank you.
Thank you.
Did you want to add? I'm just going to chime in on one, I think a good example might be like White Oak Middle School, where that was actually funded in FY23. And so, if you look at the timeline that we were showing, making sure people are clear, just because their HVAC in their school is listed in the FY27 doesn't mean that the construction will actually happen. So, figuring out a way for us in the CIP to make that clear, that you're not going to actually get construction, depending on how many phases, if you're in elementary, middle, or high school, when would construction start and how many phases do we anticipate? Because I do think people, we've probably gotten people excited when they see their name in the FY27. And then, when you look at that timeline, it does take multiple years before you actually see that impact.
I always think about Star Trek, the engineers always, you know, building in that cushion. Anyway, the people should know that, right? So, then, it just helps us all have set our expectations right, thank you.
Thank you. I have asked previously that, you know, I think it'd be helpful for us to see which schools are consistently too warm, you know, 80 degrees or more that we're getting those reports. I know that that's like our OSHA guidelines, but, you know, I also think about the ones that are just below the threshold. And the, yes, like, OSHA guidelines, we're thinking about our staff, but I also think about the children in our schools too. So, I'm also curious about schools that report varying temperatures. You know, sometimes there's a section of the building that's much too hot or much too cold. I can think of one specifically, I have a teacher friend that always wears shorts to work because his room is always too hot, even when it's January. So, I'm, I'm wondering if that's something that's, maybe it's just this building specific, but is that something that we hear about schools across the county?
Not, not building specific, just going to chime in there.
I agree, but I was just wondering if the experts had something to say.
So, typically, and again, without trying to get too technical in that, you know, trying to explain sometimes the reason for that happening and without knowing that particular building. So, there are certain systems that HVAC systems that are better at controlling temperature, specifically when there are what we call shoulder days, meaning that days that are not too hot or too cold. So, there are, you know, HVAC systems that can operate throughout any temperature range, regardless of what the outside temperature is. But there are certain HVAC systems that can only operate in heating mode or operating in cooling mode. And they can't adjust when the, you know, outside temperature is, say, 55, 60 degrees, where you don't need as much heat as you would on a 32-degree day, if that makes sense. So, that in those cases, those buildings, you know, would typically suffer. That's what, you know, my experience has been. So, without, you know, knowing that particular exact building. But yes, those kind of issues can exist in certain buildings. You know, we try to adjust by, you know, our maintenance folks, what would, they would go in and is try to adjust by, you know, adjusting dampers and try to move air between different rooms and see if that, that helps. But sometimes, it's basically, if the system is already installed and that's the system that we have and that was installed 20 years ago, then essentially, we can only do some certain adjustment and not make that condition a whole lot better.
So, then, to follow up on that, as we're, you know, maybe adding or updating our systems, it sounds like perhaps, as you described the two models, model one is maybe the better option there. Are we consistently choosing model one?
Yeah, so when we do replace, that's why we do the hiring of the engineers to make sure that we're upgrading the systems to meet current codes and, and whatnot, because a lot of these buildings, you know, that those systems that we have in the, or they're, you know, they met the code at the time they were installed. But obviously, as we upgrade, we have to meet current codes and standards, so we upgrade the systems.
Great, thank you. I have one other question. You're describing this long timeline and sometimes there's a situation where a school is untenable right now. And we've heard that, you know, from the community, especially as things have started to get warm. Can you describe, like, also for those that are watching, what happens when, you know, something, it's untenable right now, but it's going to take some time for us to replace the part or something like that? What do we do to try to make that situation better for the school in that moment?
So, yes, those are obviously very challenging. It depends on, you know, what we need. In certain cases that in this year, when the days were getting very warm, in certain schools, we did supply what's called the spot coolers. They, you know, helped, you know, bring the temperature down. They're not going to, you know, make it down to 72 degrees on a very hot day, but they, they, they help. So, that's what we've been, you know, trying to supply, just to make sure that the classrooms don't get too warm. In case of McGruder, for example, their chiller fill, which is a large equipment, we had to actually bring in a rental chiller and we hooked it up. And it's a, you know, smaller chiller, but it was able to at least, you know, temporarily help, you know, cool the building down. So, those are the, you know, certain things that we have that our maintenance department can do up to a certain extent. But as you know, if, if it's, if the, you know, problem is, is massive, then, you know, we, we typically have to, you know, contract out the repair as soon as possible, supply those spot coolers just to help them, you know, continue, you know, being in that building for the days it requires for the repair. But those are the things that we use on a temporary basis, whether, you know, bringing in rental equipment or supplying with fans and, and spot coolers.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you. So, I mean, when we, when we think about, you know, some of these emergency scenarios, and I have two questions, actually. I say that now, but I might have more, but.
Let's keep it brief, we've got the, the capital and policies and we've got 20 minutes left.
Yeah. So, when we think about like some of these emergency scenarios and going through, like, like when we're talking about bringing like rental chillers or things like that, are there any assets that we, that we own, that we just, that we keep in kind of storage for situations like this? Or that, like, it makes, it makes fiscal sense for us to keep and hold on to versus the ones that, you know, the cost is too substantive for us to hold on to it just for in case of an emergency?
No, that, that is a great question. I mean, that is something we do think about. However, you know, in case of, you know, having those rental chillers for emergencies, the issue is if we don't need it and it sits somewhere, and then it becomes another maintenance problem. And then, when we might need it, it may not operate properly, which is why those things have been historically been contracted out because those contractors are keeping those equipment up to make sure that they're ready for those rental periods. So, typically, we don't, you know, maintain or keep large equipment like that in our portfolio.
Got it, got it, okay, thank you. And then, going back to kind of the, the earlier sort of message about, you know, some, some classrooms being super hot, some classrooms being super cool, is there, is there anything that we can do, like barring a full, like, you know, system replacement, like, in, in some of those areas? I mean, I've had multiple schools, like virtually every single school that I've visited, I, I've asked them the question, right? Are your, do you have issues with your heating and cooling systems in your school? And every hand goes up, right? So, like, when I think about that, I mean, I think about, you know, it's more systemic problem than just, you know, the ones that need their HVAC replaced versus the ones who, like, maybe a classroom is too hot or a classroom is too cold. Like, what can be done around that? Like, is, is there anything that we're looking into or is that also a budget concern that we need to look into as well?
No, typically, if we do get a work order, I mean, that's the process. We do, again, you know, there are certain energy through the work order process, but, and, and that's, or again, you know, we talked about, you know, bringing in spot coolers. And, and or, you know, sometimes, you know, we look at, you know, sometimes, sometimes we would find there are certain issues, like, you know, recently, there was a classroom we found was getting too warm. And when we, you know, when we got the work order and we started digging in, figured out there was a piece of insulation that kind of was covering where the air comes out, and that was a simple fix. But understanding or getting those work orders in allows our maintenance team to, you know, to be able to look at those and, and provide some temporary solutions.
So, just like work orders, is that what, is that the solution I'm hearing?
Yes.
Can I just also say this, the schools we presented tonight are all the big replacements, but the team is also working on much smaller ones, although I would argue equally as important and big. So, like, we have a boiler replacement at Northwest High School and East Silver Spring Elementary School this summer, as well as a cooling tower at Richard Montgomery. So, there are things happening besides just like the larger ones that were presented that do have a significant impact throughout the school year.
Okay, can we move on?
That's it for me, yep.
One quick question, Ms. Stewart.
We can get into this later about the kind of technology that you're putting in our new schools and also what you're doing with these new systems. And I wanted to dig into zoned HVAC systems and, because I've been hearing that there's better technology, newer technology, where you can actually have more individualized targeted temperatures based on, you know, sun exposure and all different kinds of things. So, I just want to say, can we get a report on that later? Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, if we could move on to the capital.
Great, I'm just going to give a quick update. I'm going to start with the feasibility studies. So, this spring, we have had seven feasibility studies underway. They're all in slightly varying states, so just wanted to give a sense. But all of them have had at least three community meetings plus an additional staff meeting. Three of them, the communities have already received a presentation on the final options. And those are Eastern Middle School, Cold Spring Elementary, and Whitestone Elementary. I should say, one is doing it to this evening and Whitstones will be in July. So, those three will have received their final presentation. Piney Branch will receive their final option presentation in July. There's also an extra meeting on Monday to discuss other topics of that one. And then, final options for Burning Tree, Twin Brook, and Damascus will be in September. Again, they've already had three community meetings to date where a number of different options and drafts have been shared. The design teams will be sharing final reports with MCPS this summer, which is important for us as we take those into consideration during our CIP planning for the FY27 to 32. And then, Springbrook, as you guys are all aware, was just approved on Tuesday by the board. So, we will start to work with that design team this summer and kick off community meetings in the fall. I'm going to move into then the additions and the replacements and the construction. So, this summer, we have the Green Castle addition that will open this August. Nealsville, we have, the building has been completely demolished and we are wrapping up the site work there. Poolsville, most of it is open, but we have the main gym that will open in August, which is looking great and exciting for that to open. And then, the media center and cafe and dining space will open in October. They already have other spaces that they have been using this school year. And final site work will wrap up at the end of this calendar year. Silver Spring International Middle School, the gymnasium will open this August. And then, we have a slightly smaller one, but a concession stand and stadium will open for this school year as well. Then, as we think just a couple about upcoming school years, for school year 26, 27, we have Lleak that will open, so a complete replacement, so that one is well under. So that one is well under construction. Whitman has a smaller project, but the bus loop and parking. Burtonsville, the full replacement, so the new school site is under construction and that is scheduled to open for August of 2026, as well as part of the classrooms for the early childhood center at the old Burtonsville. And then Woodward High School site amenities in the back behind the exit, the new school that was built. And then for summer of 2027, we'll have Crown High School, so the new replacement will open. Northwood High School as well, brand new construction happening there. And then for Woodward, it will be the auditorium and the auxiliary gym that is being built on the side right now. And those are the projects that the team has been working on.
Great. Thank you.
Yeah.
Any questions?
Just one quick one. I mean, when, when it comes to, to, to the Northwood project, and then we, we just talked about Woodward, the auditorium opening up a little bit later. If Northwood is also phased, phased in, right? Or will Northwood be opening fully? Okay.
Yeah.
I mean, there's, there's just a concern for a second, if, if we were having a phased approach, that Northwood would be without its auditorium for, for upwards of four or five years at that point. So just wanted to elevate that.
Yeah, I know. 2027 Northwood, the entire project, all three phases will be completed.
All right, sounds great.
Or sorry, two phases. Yeah.
Perfect. Thank you.
Ms. Stuart.
Silver Spring International, can you remind me, because the, the new gym's opening, what's the old gym going to be?
I, I believe, and I might have to get back to you on that, I believe part of that is remaining because there are restroom facilities in there that are being used. But I, I can get you the details on what's happening with the rest of that structure.
And as you know, that building is such a challenge. And so I think I had some questions at our last meetings about what can we do in the next CIP. So I'm looking forward to that because quality of life, unfortunately, the new gym doesn't really do anything for the quality of the everyday experience in the school. So hopefully we can take a look at that in the next CIP. Thank you.
Okay. No other questions? So thank you for the both presentations. And finally, we have updates on three financial policies related to fiscal management committee's work, which have been presented to the policy committee for consideration. And we'll be presented to the full board in September. I will ask Ms. Alfonso Windsor to walk us through on a really high level, the updates to the policies for fiscal responsibility and control, operating fund investments and funding of retirement pension systems. As the fiscal management committee, I felt like we need to have a better understanding about what these are about and how will they make things better?
Thank you. So in the interest of time, I, I am going to say that we did have a stakeholder engagement for all these revisions and we also consulted, you know, some of our consultants that work with us in investments and so on as part of, you know, the engagement strategy. So for the first one, policy DAA fiscal responsibility and control, the last time that we revised this policy was in 2002. So as we know, the Maryland law requires county governments to adhere to a specific fiscal accounting procedures and county boards of education are required to follow those established procedures that the counties have looked, in which they are located. So the suggested revisions to this policy include language reference to our MCPS financial manual. This manual was developed in 2007 and we update that regularly for technical changes and for MCPS organizational reporting structure changes, as well as changes in law, policy and procedures according to Comar when we implemented the MCPS hub and so on. So that's why in this policy, we are redacting a lot of the language because it's all containing the MCPS financial manual. So we're referencing the manual as part of the policy as a place where people can access, you know, to look at all, all our financial processes. In addition to the direct reference to the manual, we're also including in the policy the reports that we submit and that the board acts on, you know, every month, our monthly financial reports. We're including that as part of the policy. At the policy management committee, Ms. Silvestri made the recommendation to make sure that we include language referencing the audit, the yearly audits that we undergo. So we're making that change to the policy as well, or we're suggesting that draft language in the policy as well. So that is the summary of the changes for that first policy, if there's any questions.
Okay. Continue, please.
So then the second policy is policy DIG, operating funds investments. And this one was last revised in 2011. And this policy needed updates just to bring in line with our current processes and to bring greater clarity to this document. This policy establishes the criteria for the investment of unexpended appropriated, appropriated operating funds and designates the superintendent of schools or designate as investing the funds consistent with this policy. And I just want to make sure that we are all understanding that this is about our operating funds, our daily funds that we use to, you know, to, to make, meet our commitments. MCPS only makes short-term investments for our operating budget. And because of the magnitude of our operating budget, those modest investments over the last few years have given us returns of $5 to $7 million, you know, the ways that we are investing. But short-term means that we, it's, it's our agreements that are less than a year and it gives us the flexibility for cash in, cash out as we need it. And we will also add language as recommended by Ms. Savarna, Mr. Savarna at the last meeting to, at the policy management committee meeting to ensure that the core values of MCPS are part of those investment strategies. So we add, we will add language to that. And the new language also states the objective for investment activities and emphasize the value of prudent judgment, discretion and care and foremost maintaining the safety of this capital as we make those investments. And that is the summary of that policy.
Thank you.
Then last but not least, we have policy GIG, the Funding Retirement Pension System. So this policy was last revised in 2009. We, the, and we also sought recommendations for this policy from our consultant, the firm that contracted to do our audit for the pension and retirement system. And those recommendations are part of this revisions. We want to make it clear that there's two policies that, that are similar, sorry, that in this policy, we have two boards that are simultaneously addressed, you know, referred to in this policy. The first one is the Board of Education and their intent and responsibility to provide retirement and pension benefits to MCPS employees. And the second board is the Board of Investment Trustees, to whom the Board of Education delegates responsibility to oversee the investment of fund assets. The Board of Education delegates those powers through a trust agreement that we have with the Board of Trustees. The policy also assigns to the superintendent of schools or designates certain responsibilities, which include the contracting with a credential, credential actuarial firm, the GRS that we've, that I prior referenced. And they prepare reports that are required by the Board of Education as part of their oversight. Those reports are brought yearly in front of the fiscal management committee to review any recommendations. And then finally, they, those recommendations go to the board. Again, per Mr. Savarna's recommendation, we're adding language to ensure that our investments meet the core values of MCPS. There's also redacted language in this policy. We're taking out a lot of the terminologies that are very technical and we are, are in the process of creating a new regulation where we incorporate those terminologies.
Great.
And that's.
Thank you.
That's the summary of the last.
Any questions? All right. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Are there any final comments or new business to bring before the committee this evening? Okay. If not, I give you five minutes back of your lives. That concludes today's fiscal management committee meeting. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, raise your hands and we are adjourned.